Hello, my name is Josh Leikis. I am the Chairperson of the Board of Appeals, the Building Board of Appeals, and I will be presiding over the Board's deliberation on hearing items this evening. The Board, the Building Board of Appeals is an impartial body made up of residents of the town of Prescott Valley who volunteer their time and efforts and are guided by state and local rules and regulations. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing item into record. Following the identification of the hearing item, staff will present the case and their recommendations to the Board, after which questions from the Building Board of Appeals will be directed to staff regarding the case. It is at this point that I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the case before the Board. I will, I ask that you will direct your pertinent comments to the Board through the Chairperson and not to the staff or individuals with the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point as I may exercise the prerogative to confine public comment if need be, should there be considerable public involvement in this case. I'd like to call the April 24th, 2019 Building Board of Appeals meeting into order. Members of the town staff present are Richard Parker, Community Development Director, Woody Lewis, Building Official, Warren Colvin, Senior Building Inspector, Kristi Jones, Administrative Support Two. Kristi, could you please call roll?
Member Nine?
Here.
Member Norton?
Present.
Member Pape?
Here.
Member Leadhead?
Here.
Member Smith? Vice Chairperson Jerpy?
Here.
Chairperson Solikos?
Present.
Okay, we can do the approval of the minutes for March 6, 2019, work-study minutes, and the March 6 regular session minutes, the April 10, 2019, work-study minutes. If the Board has reviewed the minutes, I ask if there are any corrections to the minutes.
I think we need to do separate motion for each one.
All right, first we'll do the March 6 work-study minutes. Anybody have any corrections or anything on that?
I move this be approved.
I'll second that.
Okay, how about the regular session minutes?
I move they be approved.
And then how about the April 10 work-study minutes?
I move they be accepted.
Second.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes as written. And is there any announcements?
Just if everyone say aye to approve the minutes.
Oh, if everyone approves the minutes, say aye.
If I call, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I didn't even realize there was one.
I went.
Didn't see you.
I was, I saw you, yeah. I thought it brought my spouse. It was free food and it was, it was very entertaining. I thought, great food. Always is.
I totally spaced it. We've been so busy with trying to sell the house.
They do get the pool party in the summer, too. So there's a second option.
Okay, well, if there's no any announcements, let's move on to the hearing. Upon the request of the town of Prescott Valley, a public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the proposed adoption of the Town of Prescott Valley Administration, Administrative Code, 2018 International Building Code, IBC, 2018 International Residential Code, 2018 International Mechanical Code, 2018 International Plumbing Code, 2017 National Electrical Code, 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, and the 2018 International Fuel Gas Code. Woody or Warren, could you make your presentation, please?
Chair and Board, thank you. Staff has provided the Board information in regards to the code changes and amendments. Staff will be working to form an energy conservation group to address future energy code changes. And thirdly, staff recommends the Board to approve to adopt the 2018 I-codes, 2006 Energy Code, 2017 Electrical Code, and revisions to Article 7 of the town code. We'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you again.
Do we have any questions? Okay, well, if there is no questions, then, go ahead.
We just comment. Regarding the proposal, I'm calling it a proposal for want of a better word, I would say for sure I appreciate the Building Department at least paying attention to my meager concerns about the energy code and conveying that you have listened and responded to something in that regard. I understand it's probably just my issue. My concern is, is that we're just slipping behind other towns and cities around us by sticking with the 2006 label on the energy code and things that go with it. And although you're proposing something, at some level, it's not something. To, to say that endeavoring to do something is close to not doing something. I'm endeavoring to lose weight and, and, and I'm well-intentioned, but it can happen that it doesn't occur. I suspect I probably just have to, hopefully, we can agree to disagree on this energy code thing. From just my standpoint, I would, I would put into a motion that, that for sure I would vote for accepting our 2018 codes as amended and proposed, but only with the stipulation that the town's Building Department agree, and in my thinking reasonably, within three years to go to an equal, only an equal energy code to the towns and cities around us. That seemed like a very reasonable kind of request. My preference would be, of course, that we went to 2018, but I, I don't want to get nuts about it. I know that there are, there are some builders who are building beyond these codes now, but the fact is, there aren't many builders building beyond, and if there are, that's even more reason to jump the code up, because they will not be hurt in any way. They'll be ahead of it. It would be the others who are lagging behind that would be affected. Though, I appreciate your, your offer to form a, a, a study commission, a study group, but that simply would not, that would not speak to my needs. I, I, of course, being a contractor and having friends who are contractors and a great group and will do anything for you, but we all know that by and large contractors are going to resist all the code improvements they can. They're seen as a, a pain and an expense to them. And in my conversations with contractors generally, comments will be like, "Well, those people don't know what they're talking about, and, and it doesn't help, and it's a waste of time and money," and all of those negatives. So, my sense is that if you want to keep it where it is, you'd get a group of contractors on a committee to decide what is done with the codes. My sense is that that should at least be done by a major number of people who are simply citizens in the community. Contractors are very smart and they know building. I haven't found the people that I know and have associated with as advocates at all for energy unless somebody is looking over their shoulder and seeing to it what they're doing, and usually frustrating them about that. And I think about in all the areas where we deal with something that is forced, more or less, I, I don't find it to my liking, for, for example, the car manufacturers to decide how safely we make the cars, or the drug manufacturers to decide how safe the drugs are. We need oversight in those things. And for sure, you people do a great job with the town. I don't, I don't envy the headaches you have to go through dealing with contractors and builders and/or people like me. So I appreciate what you do, and I really want to vote for this, going ahead with this code, but without a commitment to sometime in the, I'm saying, thinking three years, to move to at least 2012 or whatever our neighbors are doing that we're saying we want to standardize with them. I just couldn't bring myself to vote for this. Now, one vote is not going to change. I understand that. But at least I want it on the record, that that's, that's where I am on that. We need to move ahead with this energy issue.
Couple of points, if I may, in response.
Go ahead, Richard.
One issue is timeliness. I don't think we're going to endeavor. I'm going to direct that the Building Department bring a recommendation to you in no more than six months. It's what I told you last time, and I'm going to insist on that. If they don't do it, I will endeavor to find somebody else who will. The other thing is, it should not just be contractors. I would invite anybody from this Board to participate in that process. It ultimately is going to come back to you. You're going to digest recommendations, and you may get back to a place where indeed you want to move forward to the 2018 code. Purpose of looking at this is to hear from contractors, people that utilize best practices, to see what they are currently doing for their customer base regarding energy, and bring that back to you. And if you don't think it's enough, you have an opportunity to make a recommendation to the Town Council to adopt the 2018 or some sort of combination thereof. At this point in time, as you pointed out, we are following suit with Yalapie County that's adopting the 2006. We believe that that is pertinent because we live within a sea of Yalapie County. And that's the basis for our recommendation. With all due respect.
Any other member of the Board like to say anything? Okay, at this time, we will open up the floor to any public comment, or one person out there.
Sandy Griffiths, Yalapie County Contractors Association, Chairman, members of the Board. With all due respect, Board Member Nye, the building processes for the homes being built in Prescott Valley are quite different than the homes being built up in Prescott where they have the 2018 energy code due to no fault of their own. And if they could roll that code back, they would immediately do so tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. Unfortunately, that can't happen. I think that in three years, there's going to be a lot of changes with the energy code, and they're starting now. Your suggestion is very valid that Mr. Parker and his team, along with the industry, investigate and look at what's going on with energy. We're starting to find that homes are being built too tightly, and we have a lot of bad air going into them because of the energy code. So, you're going to be in good hands with the 2006 code. A lot of builders are already building above those, and it's going to be okay. I know that Mr. Parker's on it. We will be deeply involved to assure that you have good peace and good feelings about the code and the direction that it goes in. I think you, as a Board, you've done a phenomenal job. I'm quite impressed with all of you and your comments. Keep up the good work, and we're all in this together to sail the ship without putting way too much drag on it to bog down the process in the building industry. So, you Board Member Nye are quite a genius, and I love listening to you, and you've got some great comments, and your passion is heartfelt. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to Ms. Griffiths?
Please do.
I would just respond, Ms. Griffiths, that I, at the same time, certainly admire what you have done with the Contractors Association. It's an amazing accomplishment that you have had. So, I appreciate your comments.
Anybody else on the Board would like to say anything? You all good? So, we want to motion the, the codes and accepting...
You entertain a motion of adopting the...
Yeah, entertain a motion of adopting the codes.
As submitted.
As submitted. I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion. That we adopt the, the codes as presented, previously presented to us.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I don't know how else to word it other than reading all of this.
Take a vote, then, or discuss?
Yes.
Or do it...
Yes, we have a motion and a second, so we would vote.
Okay.
Discuss first, right?
Is there any discussions before we vote?
I would add an amendment to that main motion. My understanding, I might add, our, our bylaws say that we are operating according to Robert's Rules, and as I read them, you can have as many as three motions on the floor at one time. So, my, my amendment would be that basic motion that we just made, but with the stipulation that the town of Prescott Valley, within three years, update to the same or more current energy code year as that adopted by the Building Departments of our neighboring towns and cities. So, that would mean that the motion is, is, the main motion is amended, and if I'm understanding correctly, as a point of order, we need to first vote whether or not to add this amendment to the main motion, not approving the amendment, just whether or not it's added.
That's correct, and you would continue discussion. So you, your first order of business would be to vote on the amendment as a group to determine if you want to add that amendment to the original motion. So, at this point in time, you would open the, the process for discussion on the amendment. So you would say, are there any discussions on the amendment?
Is there any discussion on the amendment?
I, I would just like to, to say that in the way the amendment is worded, we're giving away our right to do this by tying ourselves to the area around us to comply with whatever they decide to do. I have no problem with an amendment that says that we will update our code within the next three years, but to say that we need to update to whatever they are doing then gives them the right to set what our code is going to be.
Okay.
You would ask if there's any other comments regarding the amendment to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would be willing to alter the amendment to stating simply up to 2012, if that would be more acceptable.
What you're going to have to do is you're going to have to vote first on the first initial amendment, having been placed on the record. So, if there's no additional, you'll conclude discussion. You'll have to ask if there's additional comment on the amendment to the motion.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the, the first amendment?
Okay, hearing none. You'll have a vote on the proposed amendment to the motion.
Okay, let's have a hearing on the proposed motion. Well, the second, he was bringing...
You would have to have a second on the amendment, correct.
So...
So is there a second on the amendment?
Is there a second on the amendment?
No second means that the amendment fails. Now, you would entertain the original motion or any alternative amendments to the motion.
Okay, so we'll vote on the original motion?
No, you would entertain, are there additional?
Oh, is there any additional?
Additional discussion on the motion that's on the table.
Is there any additional motion on the discussion on the table?
Got it, kind of. I heard a member talk about wanting to go to 2012. Is that something you want to offer as an amendment to the motion?
Yes, my sense was that I did that, but perhaps not.
No, because we needed to clear the amendment.
I can...
So you would make a motion.
Restate that to make sure it's clear. My amendment would read with the stipulation that the town of Prescott Valley, within three years, update to the 2012 energy code.
Is there a second on the second amendment to update the code to 2012 within three years?
I would second that.
And now you would offer, is there any discussion regarding the proposed amendment?
Is there any discussion regarding the proposed amendment?
Can I? It's not my place, but it's your direction, sir. I would suggest to you that you add language in there to 2012 or newer codes as proffered by whatever the energy, whatever the acronym is that brings that stuff forward, because there may be changes in less than three years, as has been discussed, that may be very apropos to you folks as opposed to the 2012. Is that something you would understand and consider as part of your motion, and you would support as part of your second? That is, or newer codes as proffered by, and what's the right acronym? International Energy Conservation Code. Understand my intent?
So if I'm hearing correctly, you're saying 2012. Am I understanding to be a minimum of 2012?
Correct, minimum of 2012 or newer codes as proffered by whatever that acronym is. If there is a new code that actually tries to marry them together, we're going to be back in front of you anyway. We're going to be back in front of you in six months. I don't think that they're going to move that quickly. But that would be the sense of your motion now that you have to second. Now you have to ask, is there additional discussion regarding the amendment to the motion?
Is there any additional discussion to the amending of the movement?
You would ask for her to roll call vote on the amendment to the motion.
Can we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Okay, but just to make sure, let's get a final restatement on the amendment to make sure that we're all understanding.
Do you want me to read what I understand it is? That basically you had moved to approve the code adoptions as submitted with the following stipulation and forward to the Town Council with the recommendation of approval. And the stipulation is that the town of Prescott Valley will update to the 2012 or newer I E C C code within three years.
That's not a part of, part of the motion that I made, though. That's an amendment, so...
It is the amendment. You're still dealing with the amendment.
So we need to vote on, yeah.
Now you're voting on the amendment to the motion, which has a, yeah, first and second. So you're only concentrating on what she just read. You understand?
Yes.
Okay, you should call the roll, then.
Member Leadhead?
Nay.
Member Nye?
Yes.
Member Pape?
Yes.
Member Norton?
No.
Vice Chairperson Jerpy?
No.
Chairperson Solikos?
No.
So the amendment fails. Now you're back to the original motion. Okay, so you're back to the original motion. Discussion on the original motion. You've got a first and second, so now you're discussing the original motion.
The original motion. To the original motion, we're still looking into the energy conservation. We're just not stating that we're, we're going in three years up to 2012.
No, the new, the original motion is to pass the code as presented.
As submitted.
Which includes the 2006, yes, that is correct.
Okay.
The only thing I would like to, to discuss according to this is, I understand Mr. Nye's point, but it's, it's a mute point. Within the three years, the energy code is going to change. And it will happen. We don't need to tie ourselves to a timeframe. It's probably going to happen before that timeframe.
I, I would tend to agree with you, but again, we're trying to deal with what's on the table right now.
No, and that's what I'm doing, it's just...
Okay, so you would continue, if there's any continued discussion regarding the motion.
Is there any more discussion on the motion?
Okay, hearing none. You would call the question on the motion that's on the floor.
The original motion with adopting the codes. Can we have a vote on that?
And just to reiterate, this motion is to approve the code adoptions as submitted and forward to the Town Council with a recommendation of approval. Member Leadhead?
I'm sorry, let me clarify. So where does it stand regarding the town's proposal in this vote?
If it is your intent to clarify, it's staff's recommendation that is part of your adoption that you direct the staff to return to you in no more than six months with a recommendation after putting together a committee, including a membership from this group, to bring forward the best practices that are currently being applied regarding energy efficiency and determine if you want to move in another direction or add thereto.
I'll support that as the motion maker.
We've confused Kristi, that was good.
Well, right, because basically submitted, the recommendation, the memo, is that you will have the, the groups. So, I was just going to put "as submitted" because that's what we submitted in the memo. But we will change it to be six months.
The original motion, let's put it to a vote, please.
Member Leadhead?
Aye.
Member Nye?
No.
Member Pape?
No.
Member Norton?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Jerpy?
Yes.
Chairperson Solikos?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then. And with no further business, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, in what favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.